Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, July 12, 2022. And this special joint meeting of the Sandpoint City Council and Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in the council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt. Also present are counselors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groth, Justin Dick, and Jason Walker's participating remotely, I believe. Is Jason with us?
Mr. Mayor, I believe that he was, I believe he may have been having some technical difficulties, so he is not currently in attendance.
Okay, he will, we expect him to be here at some point. I'll now yield the floor to the Planning and Zoning Commission Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, I'm Chairman John Hastings, also President Commissioners Mostuncle, Slate Kent, Amelia Boyd, Luke Amit, and Ben McGrath.
Thank you. With some business for the council at the top of the agenda and for purposes of efficiency and to avoid confusion as we proceed, I'd like to call for just one presiding officer this evening with myself as mayor presiding over the remainder of the meeting and would ask for your concurrence, please, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, I concur.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please rise.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for being here this evening, counselors, commissioners, city staff, and our consultants and members of the public. This special meeting has been scheduled as a joint workshop between the council and the commission. Representatives from the city's consultant firm Leland Consulting Group are here to present their draft housing and economic analysis and associated policy recommendations and answer any questions in a discussion with the council and the commission. I respectfully ask the council and commission members to direct their questions through me so I can help facilitate the appropriate responders. Relative to policy discussions, it may be our presenters from Leland responding, but it may also include background information from city staff. And I want to recognize some of our other invited agency officials who are here tonight. And I will give you an opportunity to ask questions at the end of the presentation. I know we have a mayor from Kootenay here, and we may have others as the evening progresses. So, thank you again for your attendance here this evening. This is a presentation and discussion only in tonight's workshop, and no decisions will be made. Therefore, we will not be taking any public comment at tonight's meeting. When decisions related to these recommendations come before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council, the public will be afforded an opportunity to provide comment. So, before we proceed with tonight's workshop, I'd like to announce that Forrest Shucks' term on the Planning and Zoning Commission expired at the end of June. Serving as a planning and zoning commissioner is a significant volunteer commitment. I very much appreciate the three years that Forrest dedicated to our community in this capacity. And I want to thank him wholeheartedly for his service. To our call for new commission members several months ago, you may recall, we received an unprecedented number of applications, and we again sought additional applications this past month. City Planner Amy Tweetin and I interviewed several candidates with City Resident Nick Palito, I'm sorry, Palito, rising to the top. I've appointed Nick to an initial term of three years. His application and resume were provided in the meeting packet. Nick is also in attendance this evening. If council members have any questions as you consider confirmation of his appointment, and of course, I would certainly encourage and welcome and thank council members for their support of his appointment. Nick, I'd like to invite you to the podium at this time to introduce yourself and answer any questions that council may have for you. Thanks, Nick.
Good evening. My name is Nick Palito, and I'm super excited to have a vote of confidence from Mayor Ronstadt, looking to learn and serve the community. I've lived here since 1992 and seen the community grow from just a 2,400 population to where we are today. And so, like we were discussing, we can't really roll back the hands of time and get back to the 90s, but I think moving forward and having a vision and doing it in a, you know, responsible way is going to be the most important thing right now. So, happy to be here.
Thanks, Nick. Does council have any questions for Nick? No? Okay. Thank you, Nick. You may sit down. Appreciate it. I will entertain a motion to confirm my appointment of Nick Palito to the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term, beginning immediately through June 30, 2025. Is there a motion?
Been moved.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Groth?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Okay, great. And Mr. Palito is hereby confirmed. And feel free to take a seat up here by Mr. Chairman Hastings, if you would, Nick, and you can just get right to work. All right? All right. Crash course today.
Thank you.
The final item on the agenda this evening is our workshop, beginning with a presentation from representatives from Leland Consulting Group who are with us online. I'll now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton to get started. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been several months in the making, and tonight we have with us electronically Ted Camp and Chris Zahas with Leland Consulting. And I think they will jointly be doing a presentation to council this evening and the Planning and Zoning Commission on their report findings and policy implications. As council and the commission will recall, council had approved us moving forward with this project in late December with the notion that undertaking such a study would inform the update to our comprehensive plan, which will be undertaken this year. And Amy will be talking about next steps relative to that at the end of the presentation tonight and what people can expect in that regard. It was also to inform, we've seen a number of applications come in for rezones, and council had made a decision on a rezone application comp plan amendment that came in late last year, a decision not to approve that and to undertake a study to inform those decisions moving forward. Furthermore, the mayor had convened a workforce housing task force last year. And as a next step for that, this study was also providing data to inform next steps and planning relative to workforce housing. It also was looking into economic data, population data, which informs our planning and building side of the house at the city as well as utilities planning. And you will hear probably some references to some of the utility challenges. But again, as the mayor referenced tonight, we have staff here tonight as well. And as there are questions that come up, I suspect that there will be data answers through our Leland group. They will also have perspective based on best practices, what's happening around the country relative to policy implications. But staff worked very closely with them on the policy implications and recommendations contained in the report. I'm sure a number of those issues, we're not new to council. We've discussed those in strategic planning, and I think some of those issues have come up at planning and zoning meetings. And therefore, Amy, our city planner, is in attendance and can help fill in answers to questions tonight, too. We have Greg, our utilities director, Fonda, our city attorney, Amanda, our IDS director is with us, as well as Sarah from finance and myself. So, we are also prepared to kind of help fill this in and look forward to a, what we believe will be a very productive discussion. So with that, I will hand it over to Ted and Chris.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Chris Zahas. I'm President of Leland Consulting Group. We are an economic development and real estate consultant from based in Portland. We've been working along with my colleague Ted Camp since the spring on this project, and we're really excited to be here tonight to help walk you through some of the key findings and recommendations of what we found as we looked at Sandpoint and the economics and the housing and industrial markets. The work that we did involved considerable desktop research, so looking at real estate data, census data, you know, things that you can find on the computer. But we also made a site visit back in June, I want to say, or May, maybe it was earlier. Everything's a blur these days. And where we not only toured the community, but also met extensively with key stakeholders, developers, employers, to really get a feel for how the local economy works, what some of the challenges are from people who are actually in the business of development and employment. So, what we have tonight is a presentation that will hit on some of the highlights of the research that we found and then touches on the key takeaways and recommendations that that will inform that long list of concurrent projects and planning that you have on your plate this year. And before I jump in and put the slides up on the screen, I wanted to do a time check as to how long we have this evening so that I can meter my talking points.
Chris, we had planned for this meeting probably about two hours for this meeting, knowing that you would have a lot of data to present. We expected a lot of discussion as well.
Okay, very good. So, we'll jump right into it. We've got the whole evening available, and Ted and I will do a little bit of tag teaming as we go through the slides. I'll lead. And Ted has done a lot of the data analysis. So if there are technical questions, you know, Mayor, you can, you know, if you feel free to interrupt us if there's questions along the way. Otherwise, we're happy to reserve the conversation till the end.
Thanks, Chris.
And hopefully the sharing screen will work. All right. Do you see a PowerPoint up on the screen?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. So, I'll see if I can. There we go. So, the outline of tonight's presentation and the report that you got is, we're going to go through a demographics and economical review of the key data points that we found, then jumping into housing demand, which I know is an important topic for everybody. Then we touch on commercial industrial land. We talk about Sandpoint and your adjacent areas and ACI, the capacity for future development. Those are going to be critical parts of the conversation. And then, again, we conclude with those, what we think are some key takeaways and recommendations and actions for where you go next. What do you do with this information? So, like with any project, we want to start with just a quick overview of the region. This is just existing information about a snapshot of Sandpoint today. There you are in Bonner County. You are only about 20% of the population of Bonner County, but you are the vast majority of all the jobs. And that's obviously not surprising. So, some of the key things that we found as we looked at the population as a starting point, one, again, no surprise to anybody in the room, but you're rapidly growing and you're you're a rapidly growing city and a rapidly growing state that's, you know, in the New York Times, Wall Street Journal, it's constantly put up there as one of the fastest growing parts of the country. Your county is largely rural, and you are by far the largest city in that county, and that makes you a hub for a lot of employment and services. And what's interesting is, we'll touch on this as we get into the data, but you've represented about half of the permits for new development or new housing in the county over the past 10 years. So, Sandpoint is seeing more, a significant amount of development, although one of the things that we also found is Ted dug into the data is that the county does not always, every housing unit that's built in the county did not necessarily have a housing permit attached to it. And so, that's cases where we've had to take an extra look at the data where things don't align and understand what's really going on under the hood, so to speak. We also notice and will have some charts that show it, but your growth is not always steady. There are peaks and troughs, averaging just under 1.5%, but sometimes as high as 4% over the past few years annual growth. The last two or three years through the pandemic have been some of the fastest growth that you've ever seen. And of course, you are a second home destination with a lot of vacation homes. And so, every housing unit that's built doesn't necessarily translate into a household living. There's about 1.5 housing units built for every household that's actually a full-time resident. And that's a dynamic that is really critical in resort and second home communities.
Chris, can I pause you there for one second? Do you have that data on Sandpoint jurisdiction proper?
Yes, we do. I'm speaking to Ted.
Surely.
The, which, the housing units per household, the kind of that excess?
Yeah.
You know, I will have to double check. I don't think the census reports, I'll have to double check. I think the discrepancy is, if I remember correctly, is less in Sandpoint. It's more like 1.3 to 1. So, there's more of that discrepancy between standing units and resident households in the county. I believe it's in the report, but if not, I'll check.
Thank you. Please continue.
Certainly. Yeah. So, this, this just shows some of your recent population growth. County grew by about 10,000 people since 2010 to 2020. Sandpoint from about 7,700 to 9,100. And that's through 2020. You've grown since then as well. Or is that for 2021?
That's through 2021, and you may see a little more on the next slide.
Yeah. So, this chart, I talked about the kind of the unsteadiness of the growth. So, this goes all the way back to 1970, showing the growth rate for Bonner County. And you've seen even, you know, with some, with a couple of the recessions, you've seen actually some negative growth. And where the, you know, the current growth is quite significant, but it's not necessarily a rate of growth that you haven't seen before at a couple of points in history. And again, this is the same chart, just in tabular data going back to 1970. What it's shown, what's significant is Sandpoint's share of growth over the past 10 years has been about 20%, which correlates almost evenly with your share of the county population. So, you're, you're not necessarily becoming more or less concentrated as a center of population within the county. It's holding steady over the past 10 years or so. And again, this is, but even across the 10 years, this is not necessarily a steady rate, which again, has been a point of a lot of discussion that we had as a team, as we've been delving into the data, because we are, we're very conscious of the past two or three years of the, just the, you know, the doubling of home prices and the rapid population growth. But we're also, as economists, it's our duty to kind of take the long view and make sure that we're paying attention to long-term trends and patterns and not overestimating, but also not underestimating as we, as we attempt to make projections.
And because of the recession around 2012, 13, 14, that neither the county nor Sandpoint were growing very, you know, the growth for both was pretty close to zero. So, you get things sort of fluctuating weirdly around there just because you're close to the zero.
Yeah. And I think one thing that's also notable about this slide is that the, your effects from the Great Recession were delayed by a couple of years from where, when other parts of the country experienced them. You know, by 2012, 2013, things were, you know, 2013, 2014, things were booming in other places, and you were still deep in a catching up. Yeah. This is really interesting information. This is pertinent to the, you know, what's been happening in the past couple of years, is the role of net migration. And by net migration, you know, we're looking at the births minus deaths. And so, what the text on the right is showing is that natural growth, so just populations from births and deaths, you're actually, that's negative. More people are dying than are being born in the county. But so, all of your growth is really attributable to in-migration from people new to the area. And that has really accelerated, as shown on the chart, in the past couple of years. And so, as we think about that, and this is where some of that utility information comes in, is we, we looked at a lot of different sources for how are we going to project with all of these different, you know, trends and peaks and troughs, how are we going to project forward for the purposes of planning, the growth rate going forward? And what's on this chart are a whole bunch of different rates that different organizations use to project growth going forward for Bonner County and Sandpoint. And you can see a pretty big spread from a very low, and it's almost so low that we would throw it out from the state demographer at the bottom of just 1.1% annual growth, up to counties' projections of 3, over 3%. And then, utilities are a great resource for population forecasts. So, we looked at that. And then, of course, we look at the rate of growth. We always will look backwards and say, well, how fast have you been growing? And these represent the county and Sandpoint's growth rates over the past 10 years. And where we landed was somewhere sort of in the middle of this pack of forecasting about 2.4% growth, which, you know, honestly speaking, is a very high growth rate. But you know it, and you're living it. So, it's not, it's not unreasonable. And that's aligned with the Sandpoint's own utility projections for their long-term birth rate. And so, delving into some of its specific economic data around housing, we looked at the age and the owner-renter status, looking for patterns that maybe tell us how Sandpoint is different than other markets that might either explain and identify an opportunity or explain a gap or a need that's, but just something that's unique about your local economy. And so, one of them is, that is shown on this chart, is that Sandpoint is almost 50% renter households, which is considerably higher than the US as a whole. And yet, you, and you're slightly an older population than the US and Sandpoint, but as you get into the county, you're with more of a retirement population, you're considerably older. And so, this is an area that's, you know, Ted and I were just talking about this this evening, where we'd like to kind of maybe explore this, this renter-owner split a little bit more, because it was a little bit surprising, because in most, in most areas that we look at, and you look at the county as a whole, you know, there's much more ownership housing. And we suspect it's because of the, you know, the more transient populations that support the tourism industry, probably exacerbated in recent years by affordability challenges. And reflected on that prior slide is that, you know, the median age, Bonner, it's getting older as more of those outsiders come to the county to retire or semi-retire. And that's a, Ted, I don't, what would be a more typical, like a metro area that you would see for an average age? Would it be in the 30s?
Yeah. And in fact, on the last, I mean, the last slide shows the median ages, right? So, the US is
Yeah, below, below 40. So, county is definitely trending older.
Yeah. And really, 2021, they're, they're like 49. Yeah.
Yeah. And so, this chart kind of breaks some of that data down into age cohorts, both for the Sandpoint and the county. And it's helpful to kind of illustrate what, within the city limits, how is that different than the county as a whole? And you'll see that, you know, the city is slightly younger, higher population in those lower age brackets on the left. And a big spike in the older households in the county as a whole compared to Sandpoint. But you do see, but both within the city and the county, you see the bump of the baby boomers, bumps of the millennials, and dips for the, for Gen X in between. Which is what we'd expect, except that the, what's notable here is the large differential between the city and the counties as a whole. And then, this chart further breaks out some of the growth in those age brackets between now and 2029.
This data was for North Idaho, so it's a few counties combined, but it should be a similar shape.
And what you'll see is these, you know, large growth in those older populations as baby boomers continue to age and live longer. And so, stick around. These, these two losses here aren't so much that you're, that those people are leaving the areas, just that they are aging into the next higher bracket. This would be the baby boomers aging up and Gen X, I'm sorry, not the, Gen X aging up here. And was it Gen?
Whatever's after millennials.
Whatever's after millennials. I can't keep track of the alphabet soup.
Gen Z.
Gen Z, I guess, yeah. And then, you know, the, the growth that's going to happen. So, significant growth in your oldest populations, and that will have implications, you know, that's important for conversations like this, because we think about what kind of housing might they need if they are going to stay put. You know, everybody in the 80 and up range doesn't necessarily, is not necessarily able to stay in their, you know, rural homes out in the forest. That, that's going to create, if they're going to stay a part of the community, some demand for senior housing, assisted living housing, not to mention employment and medical services and so forth. So, a little bit more about that migration is Ted pulled some really interesting IRS data where tracking kind of the income, the people, the income of people coming in versus the people that are leaving the county. And it really confirms the impact of the affordability crisis, isn't it? Their, the recent migration has shown that more lower-income people are moving out, and they're being replaced, and not necessarily being replaced, but more higher-income residents are coming in. And that's just combined with, so you have higher-income people moving in, you had COVID, you have supply chain issues, you have the demand for housing from millennials and just overall population growth. You've had kind of this perfect storm that has all contributed from a whole bunch of different ways. There's no single cause that's driving this really rapid growth in housing prices that in Sandpoint is, you know, exaggerated more than it would be in most other communities. And this is the chart that is really telling. So, the blue, the blue chart are the average incomes of those who, per IRS filings, filed in Bonner County one year and then were in some other county the next year, or in the in-migrants, filed in another county one year and in Bonner County the next year. And you can see that in these past couple of years, 2019, 2020, those newcomers are very high income, and those people leaving are actually much lower income and lower income.
And it's probably more, I mean, we suspect it's even worse than that now, because this, the latest IRS data is ends in 2020. And just because the housing prices have kept going up, it's probably, it could be even bigger discrepancy between the in-migrants and out migrant incomes.
Yeah. So, that, that, you know, that just simply confirms what you, what I think anecdotally people always already assume is that it's becoming unaffordable, and it's pushing out lower-income households. What this also does, though, is that's a net increase in overall aggregate household income within the county. And what you can see on this chart is those years 2016 through 2019 had a steady increase of between $40, $50 million a year in total income based on that, the newcomers versus the outgoers. But in 2020, that just took a huge leap as much more wealthy people came into the county, which, over that five-year period, it's $300 million in cumulative new income into the community. So, a real driver of potential, you know, spending power to support businesses, but also, you know, certainly explains some of the impact on your housing market. And this chart shows that housing increase, it's a little bit, these are broken up into the data points in here. increase, it's a little bit, these are broken up into, the data points in here are many, many points within a year. So it is a little bit peaky and troughy just based on the data quality and the amount of transactions at any point in any given month, particularly for Sandpoint. But you see the overall trend line of, you know, housing going from the mid threes to, you know, pushing 700 is your average home price in Sandpoint in just a couple of years. We all know that and we, and we heard that loud and clear when we met with stakeholders and talked to the practitioners in real estate. Ted wanted to help me out with those key, the key points on this chart.
A lot of numbers here, but on the right, this is just the, looking at what is listed for sale, these are the kind of the distribution of asking prices for, for sale homes as kind of got two humps here. The one peak is in the 600s and then another is way up in the 1.5 to 2 million range. The lowest that you see anything listed is in the 300s. But you know, with a median income in the 50s, you know, at best in the 60s, given the, the recent change, there's very little on the market that is affordable to the median income household earner. And on the rent side, these are typical rents, there's really not even enough data on the market to, to have recent data on rents because there's just not that much availability on the market. This is what apartments.com/co-star lists this as typical rents for the Sandpoint area. But again, it's sort of, if you can't find any units, it's sort of meaningless.
And here, you know, this just kind of puts the two together, showing the Bonner County up with a relatively low median household income relative to some of your peer, your neighboring counties, yet, you know, housing, average housing prices that are just off the chart. And so that, that mismatch is, is what's creating the affordability challenge. I mentioned earlier that, you know, part of our forecasting of housing is looking at past trends and continuing them forward. So a lot of, a lot of data that we look at, and particularly forward-looking forecast data is, is county data and is gathered at the county level. And then we would normally look for, well, what share of the county is Sandpoint and, you know, project a proportionate share of that. The challenges I mentioned earlier is that the portion, the, the census tract or HUD tracked permit data does not, doesn't appear to be fully accurate for the county because not every housing unit that gets built in the county actually had an official building permit. Whereas in Sandpoint, that's almost exclusively true. Everybody has to get a permit. So you know, this is showing the 50, about 53% of all the building permits were in Sandpoint compared to the county. But again, I think that shit, that share would actually be lower if you counted actual housing units that were getting built because there's quite a bit of unpermitted construction activity on the county. So the pipeline, something that you're, you know, is a key part of our analysis is, and boy, before we even got to Sandpoint, we were warned, you know, there's a huge pipeline of projects coming into the city for permitting at various levels of entitlement. And so we broke that to, to do our analysis, we broke that down into a few different categories of readiness. You know, so that we could track, is this something that's, you know, they've got their building permit, they're ready to go versus they've come in for a pre-app and it might be something, but it's not, it's not a real project yet. So we know you have 240 units already underway and fully permitted entering constructions.
And this is a real moving target. So these numbers may have fluctuated in the
Even in the past
past couple of months or whatever.
Yeah.
And guys, this is specific to Sandpoint?
This is Sandpoint. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just within the city. And so if you, if you add these numbers, you know, 240 are for real, they're, they're in the construction phase. 560 are, have rezon approval requests to, to council or planning and zoning. And then another eight, another 860 are earlier in the pipeline. And, you know, the, the tax in the report we gave you has a lot of the detail, but you add those all together and that's 1,660 units, which is just a massive leap compared to the rate of growth that you've seen. I mean, the whole city only grew by 1,600 people in the past 10 years. And here you've got enough housing for, you know, two to three times that in just, you know, a couple of years pipeline. One of the challenges that we again, had a lot of discussion with in our analysis is, you know, how real are some of these projects? Particularly the ones that are, you know, the third bullet of the ones that are early in the pipeline. And, and then secondly, what is the developer and contractor capacity to actually build all of those units? We know that is a constraint in Sandpoint, it's a constraint in a lot of regions of the country right now. But we, we had that in the, in the back of our mind. Every step of the way, knowing that, you know, a successful housing strategy requires not just good, you know, forecast of population growth, but you actually need the development capacity and the construction capacity to execute on that.
Right. And with Cootney County and Spokane being sort of equally hot, it, it's not like you have your pick of subcontractors to bring up to Sandpoint. It's that, that, that labor force is, there's a shortage of.
Yeah, we definitely confirm that when we met with developers as part of our outreach. So from those projections, and this might be a good point for you to jump in Ted, since this is the techie part of it.
And the, the report goes into more detail on how we even got to this point with the tables, but this is just kind of the endpoint of our residential demand forecast that we break out into four different income brackets. We're looking at, we, we project county, Bonner County demand and then apply what we think is a reasonable capture rate that Sandpoint might be able to capture, given what product type we're talking about. So for rental units capturing between 35 and 50% of what is projected to be built in the county. That Sandpoint could capture 460 to 660 units. Ownership attached, which would be like condo, townhome, row home. That capture, similar capture rates ranging from 270 to 400 units for Sandpoint. This is, this is over 10 years. This is a 10-year projection, which may have not made it onto.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is just for 10 years. And then for each one, because this is, you know, ultimately has application to your comprehensive planning and land planning and the ACI and other parts of the community. We also applied an average density to these, so that we could, to these projections, so that we could translate that to how many acres of land would you need in order to satisfy, to meet this demand? And, and then through another part of our analysis, we did a land capacity analysis of your billable land inventory to reconcile to and to see what the implications are. And we'll get to that in just a little bit.
Hey, hey, guys, I'm, I'm having a little bit of a hard time understanding this. Can you break this down for me a little more? So why are you using as the base the county demand? Where does that come from? Does that come from the county projected growth that we looked at earlier?
Where the, the assumption is that, that Sandpoint competes for prospective renters and buyers with the rest of Barn County. It, it, you know, competes more so with, with your surrounding communities, but just the county data is more reliable in terms of census data. And so the assumption is that we're going to project ahead the, what the county demand is based on county growth rates. And then we're going to say what is it sort of a fair share capture rate for Sandpoint out of the countywide demand? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. And so earlier you said that the Sandpoint share of the population historically been pretty consistent. You know, close to 20% or a little below, but, but you're projecting a capture here of 35 to 50%.
Right. And that's because, because this is rental units and ownership attached, where we assume that you would capture higher than that 20% overall household capture rate. Whereas when we get into the, the single family, that you see much lower captures, 14 to 20% for a smaller lot and just three or 4% for a large lot.
Thank you. That helps.
Yeah. And then, and again, it's, you know, we further break it down by income bracket, which is helpful in, in projecting specific demands and that certain income brackets will have a, you know, lower income will have a preponderance to rent. Higher income will have a preponderance to own. And so it further breaks out those types.
And how much you, you would actually capture, you know, depends in part on, on policy and how aggressive an annexation policy you have, how aggressive you are with infill. So we really tried to sort of say, this is, this is what we think is a fair share capture, just given the nature of Sandpoint and, and the nature of the county. So that's kind of available demand to capture if you want to.
So the other part of our analysis focused on employment and industry mix. So a couple, you know, big takeaways, again, I don't think are going to be necessarily surprising to you, but some of which were surprising to us. So we were really, you know, obviously confirmed that you have a very strong tourism-based economy, but we were pretty impressed, particularly during our site visit, at the diversity of other industries that you have, that you're, you know, unlike other resort towns around the Intermountain West, I think Sandpoint has a real balanced industrial and technology employment economy. You have
A population of 10,000, it's, it's very impressive.
Yeah. Some of the aviation stuff we saw, the technology that we know is there, software development, you know, not every mountain resort town has those kinds of employers. And that really adds your, you know, as your economy and as your authenticity and it also you know, changes some of the dynamics of your housing market because your housing market is not just about, you know, satisfying the tourism, the second home, but you're actually trying to find homes for people who have regular jobs. And, you know, as we talked to some of the employers, you know, we also confirmed that the housing unaffordability is impacting their ability to hire and retain workers. People are beginning to commute from farther afield to get to those jobs. And, you know, we heard some crazy stories from some of your downtown restaurant owners, for example, but this is also true for your more industrial employers up at the airport. The, your employment outlook is good. I mean, you've got a, you've got well-educated, a developed, well-educated workforce. There's economic growth happening in the country right now. You know, so things are healthy, but it is perilous given the importance of your housing market and, and the ability for those employers to grow by actually attracting workers. And then, of course, that in-migration data we mentioned really bears out the Zoom town phenomenon that took place during the COVID pandemic or is still potentially taking place where people from high-cost states are able to retire or move and work from home in, you know, attractive mountain communities all over the West. And so bottom line is the data brought all that out. So you're, you know, what you hear on the street and what you see anecdotally is, is true. So this shows your industry groups, employment within Sandpoint on top and Bonner County on the bottom. Healthcare is your largest sector, followed by manufacturing and then hospitality and leisure. So again, you know, as a resort or, you know, a, what is maybe outside of Bonner County is thought of as a resort community. It's pretty surprising to see, you know, hospitality and leisure down at number three. With, you know, significant healthcare and manufacturing base supporting it. And then you'll see that those bars are stacked a little bit differently when you look at the county as a whole. That reflects, you know, which jobs are more concentrated in Sandpoint proper. We talked a little bit about
I'm sorry to stop you again. I'm just curious, if you go back to that last slide, where would, say, technology fit? Would that be other services and support or?
What technology?
Yeah. Just technology in general, where, where would that be included on this chart?
It cuts across some, I mean, some technologies in manufacturing, some high-tech jobs and there's some in finance, because we've lumped finance and professional services together, like engineers are in there, architects. Those would be the two main areas where you'd see tech jobs.
But like a software company might.
Maybe a, a business service for their information potentially. Sometimes their score is manufacturing.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So
Thank you.
So this chart shows kind of commute patterns and, and the green bar is showing that, you know, the, the number of people commuting into Sandpoint for work is growing. The number of people who live in Sandpoint and commute out is kind of fluctuated, but hasn't changed a whole lot over the past 15, 20 years. And nor has the number of people who are actually able to live and work in Sandpoint, although it has declined a little bit.
And this is another case where the, the available data that's out there ends in 2019 and, and we would only expect that that in commuters would have to have grown just due to affordability
Yeah.
issues.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What's, what's the radius of that? What, what, what considers an in commuter?
So this is literally, this graph is based on the boundaries of Sandpoint. So it did.
It's a data, it's a data set that has both the location of a person's job and the location of their home. So if their job is based in Sandpoint, but their home address is outside of Sandpoint, they're considered an in commuter regardless of how far they're commuting from.
We have the same data for Bonner that I could dig up probably offline if you're interested to see that.
Yeah. And we also, and it also does have, you are able to kind of track how far some of those.
Yeah. And I will say, you know, that there's not, I went into thinking that, oh, you would see a lot of people that are commuting all the way up from Cootney County, but there's, there's not a lot of that. It, you're pretty far away there. And I think there's a, that, that's a danger for you because there's no place, you know, that the old phrase of drive till you qualify, there's no place. You know, if Bonner County is unaffordable to you, you may not just, you may not be able to work in Sandpoint because you can't find affordable housing.
There's no way.
Close enough to
Yeah.
commute to comfortably.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm just to piggyback on that question. Do you have an average or median distance that these in commuters are coming?
I, I have that and we'll just have, I, I can look it up when we, while we're talking at the end. I, I, but we do have that.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this would be an area that it worth, it'd be worth us drilling down a little bit more on this issue. I mean, you had mentioned that you could pull this data for Bonner County as well.
Yeah. Yeah. In fact, it's pulled. I, I'll just have to call up the spreadsheet and find it.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point, since we're on a roll here?
Oh, yeah.
Stay here.
All right. Thanks, guys.
You just, okay. This sort of complicated looking graph, this is, so for two different industries here that are important and to your biggest industries. This graph shows the number of people working in Sandpoint in those industries in manufacturing. And there's two dots for manufacturing, one for 2002 and one for 2019. And then the vertical axis is how many people live in Sandpoint that work in those industries. And what that's showing, that the dotted line would be where you're sort of in balance, you wouldn't expect too much to skew towards in commuting versus out commuting. But if you're below the line where you've got more workers than you have residents in a given industry. than you have residents in a given industry, uh, you would expect in commuting. So people have to commute in to fill these manufacturing jobs. It's gotten worse between two thousand two and two thousand twenty nine. You moved further away from the line. Uh, healthcare, same thing. You've got, you, you uh, added a lot of workers, but you didn't add very many residents in Sandpoint that work in, in healthcare. So it, it, you know, each new job you were adding, uh, in healthcare or in manufacturing, for the most part, was having to come in from outside of Sandpoint.
And so this chart shows a lot of information on it at once. Um, it shows your, um, long-term growth rate on the left, so, um, almost a twenty year period, uh, by industry, and then a recent growth rate. So we're looking at which ones have been growing the most over the long term and which ones have been really peaking in growth in the, in recent years and, um,
This is for the county where the data is uh, better.
Yeah, um, and what you see is, you know, a couple of things, you know, we, we hear a lot about wholesale and logistics. That's a, that's fast growing everywhere with um, e-commerce and the need for, um, distribution, everything from, you know, regional distribution down to the last mile. Um, so that's, that's growing fast over the long term and it's really growing fast over the, um, last couple of years, um, over twenty percent, uh, year over year growth. Um, manufacturing and healthcare, um, have, you know, have a steady, long-term growth rate, although they haven't necessarily been growing very fast in the past couple of years. Uh, and in fact, in the past couple of years, manufacturing is, if I'm reading this right, Ted, has declined. Even though over the long term.
So we would call that slipping because it, it still has a good long-term growth rate, but it's been slipping of late. That's a lot of numbers there. Uh, th- this is sort of steps through how we, uh, project office demand. We, we look at, uh, the state's projections for, uh, growth across different industry groups in Northern Idaho. We, we sort of blend that with the historical growth rate in Bonner County to get a blended growth rate projection for each of these industries. Uh, that we then, so we then project that out for ten years, see how many new jobs to expect in each sector. Uh, and then, uh, we apply a, a percent that we would expect to work in office space in each sector. So the, most of your office space is going to be come from the finance and professional services sector. You'll get some from other services. You'll get some from, uh, healthcare, eh, eh, through medical office. And then just multiply that by office space per office job. This is kind of calibrated a- against what we know is the inventory of space, uh, in Bonner County standing. And that we apply what we think is a reasonable capture rate. So for ten years, we're projecting potential office space growth of ninety to a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet.
Yeah, and that's, so that's over ten years. And I, I think, um, kind of the long story short is Sandpoint's not a significant office market, but there will be some growth as, um, you know, those professional services continue to grow along with your population. Um, but it's only, it's, uh, you know, adds up between eight and twelve acres worth of, uh, development, uh, specifically for office. Uh, industrially, on the hand, there's, you know, there's some significant growth. We follow the same kind of methodology that Ted, um, talked about. Um, you know, projecting, using some of the state's, um, employment projections and then, um, applying some of our own growth rate assumptions and and so on, translating down to, um, how much of that growth is going to take place in industrials for footage? And then how much of that will take place within Sandpoint? And, you know, over ten years,
Two or three hundred.
Two to three hundred plus thousand, which could, um, be roughly seventeen to thirty acres of, um, additional, um, industrial space, not office space. Uh, that's a tight.
Oh, yeah.
Um, now, the issue is, uh, land capacity. So all of those growth rates, whether it's, um, residential uh, office or industrial, um, has to you know, be done on developable land. And so, um, what we found as we looked at what your development capacity is in the pipeline is that, uh, you know, that massive amount of housing, um, that's in the pipeline that we talked about earlier is, is already claiming most of the viable infill land capacity in town. So you really are hitting a wall of, um, capacity. There's a fair amount of underutilized land, um, but it's pretty widely dispersed, um, across smaller sites. So that always creates challenges for developability because you can't get economies of scale. So, um, you know, just looking at raw acreage, tallying up a map doesn't necessarily tell the story. It's, it's, you know, where are their aggregations of, um, developable land. And per, as it pertains to industrial land in particular, um, the suitability of land for industrial tends to be, you know, a lot more narrowly defined than it is for residential. You can go away with steeper slopes and more challenges, uh, with residential development than you can, um, for industrial. They need larger, flatter, um, sites that are more proximate to transportation and other, um, industrial users. And so, and and then in addition to that, uh, again, for industrial is to be competitive in sort of the market for employers. You know, they need choice and to attract a development or an employer of a particular type, they might want, um, they would want to have an option or options to choose from. So there's some market competition. If there's only one site that can meet the demand of certain types of users, um, supply and demand is not likely to be, um, price competitive, which would make Sandpoint less competitive. So when we look at industrial land needs, we often will, sort of take the raw demand that comes from those charts, those big complicated charts, um, and then add a, add some on top of that to make sure that there is, um, there's additional supply to create that competition for sites within the marketplace.
And the bottom line is that you're, you're sort of risking some opportunity costs because you don't know the nature of some large employer that may be out there, come, that may come down the pike and need a specific type of land. And if you don't have that, available in your, um, uh, land capacity, you, you'll be passed over.
Yeah. So, um, kind of bring into the summary of some of the, um, demand, uh, needs. So this is pulling all the information from the, from what we've walked through. So housing, um, again, these are ten-year numbers. If you're doing twenty-year comprehensive planning, you, you'd want to double those. Um, you know, between um, fifteen hundred to nineteen hundred units of housing, um, or roughly a hundred and seventy to two hundred and forty acres. Um, we did break, break out, um, at the bottom, if you excluded, um, what we call affordable units or the, um, the ones that are in need to that would be needed to be subsidized through like a housing authority or tax credits. That those, but those are still housing demand. And so we, you know, we really want to focus on the top number. Um, employment industrial, you know, three to five hundred thousand square feet over ten years, twenty-seven to forty-five acres. Um, and then really kind of bringing it back to planning, um, both within the city existence limits and in your ACI, we looked at, um, capacity. So this map shows, um, where are those, uh, pipeline? Uh, is it pipeline projects, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we've got these three tiers, really four, if you include the ACI, but the tiers of development readiness. So the, at the most ready or ripe for development are, is late pipeline was already been approved, uh, uh, ready for development. The second tier is stuff that's, uh, either early on in the pipeline, you, you, you know, exists, or it's just vacant land. It's zoned. And so it, it may be equally ripe. And then the third tier down is underutilized land, which is harder to predict if, if it will, uh, develop or not.
Yeah, Chris, can I pause you for a second? Could you go back to the other, uh, previous slide for a moment? Um, I just want to, yeah, I have the question. So, you know, here we have, what was it? I think sixteen hundred units roughly in the pipeline currently. And that's, you know, uh, in theory, if that was all developed over the next couple hundred years, we'd have, you know, another sixteen hundred units. So this is projecting, uh, fifteen to nineteen hundred units over the next ten years. So how, how do you, um, I guess, how do you square that? I mean, it, it goes back to, you know, the population projections that you shared at the beginning, but is this, uh, a, especially conservative number or can you kind of walk me through your thinking there?
Well, so, I, I mean, it is complicated by the fact that that's sixteen hundred units. And that's really counting everything at any stage in the pipeline. I think about half that is you know, far enough in the pipeline that you would call it real, but is still an outlier. So it, it's hard to know how many years to assign that to. For one thing, it's very unlikely that it could be built in two years, that, um, amount of housing. So that could be a decade's worth of, uh, of housing that's already in your pipeline, just because it's a boom period. There's, you know, we're used to you know, there are children out there who've never seen a recession, but there's going to be one at some point. Uh, and we know that during recessions very little gets built. And so it's possible that everything that's in the pipeline now represents a decade's worth of of growth.
But it's also, it's, so it's, I guess, kind of the answer is it's, um, it's a little of several influences. We also know that even, even in booming areas, not everything that's in the pipeline gets built, even in, even in the best of times. Um, and we're already seeing, you know, indicators that, you know, recessionism. We don't ask us to, to predict anything like that, but um, we just know, you know, historically, it's inevitable, it will happen. And, um, you know, but this does represent that two-point-four percent annual growth rate that, um, we base it on, which is a very, very high rate of growth. It's just, it is easy, and I understand the question because it's easy to get, um, uh, because the numbers are so similar, the sixteen hundred over ten, fifteen hundred over ten years and the sixteen hundred you have in the pipeline today. I think it's just, um, the kind of off the charts, um, unprecedentedness of what you currently have in the pipeline is, can't be understated. And I think it, it does raise, you know, a good question of, um, you know, is it? Can that, how, like Ted said, you know, how many years, that, that fifteen hundred in the pipeline won't get built in one year, probably won't get that built in two years. It's, that represents many, several years of growth. So that right off the top starts to dilute, um, kind of bring those num- those two numbers, um, closer together. And then you factor in just the long-term, um, cycles that we know we're going to encounter. Uh, that's where we feel, we feel it's actually, I, I wouldn't say conservative. I think it's still, um, relatively aggressive because we are projecting two-point-four percent growth, steady growth over ten years each year, um, which is, you know, far, far and above, um, the national averages. Still keeps Sandpoint at the, you know, one of the fastest growing parts of the country.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And I just, on this chart here, I just wanted to, the first thing that confused me at the beginning, the, um, the blue outline over your, um, over the big chunk of the ACI area to the west, that's, that's a, that's just outlining those areas. That's not the same blue as what we're calling the tier one sites.
Right. That, there, in fact, there's no no multifamily. We, we're not identifying any multifamily demand in, in the ACI. It's, it's possible that would happen, but we, we're assuming that's more likely that anything is in the ACI would likely be the, uh, single family detached.
Yeah.
Um, so this is just showing the location of multifamily land in different stages of readiness.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I didn't have a question about that. It just struck me that, um, if you look at the topography lines on the, um, upper left-hand side of the area city impact, to me, that's just not a realistic line of where area of city impact could even happen. I mean, that's like Meccanic in the side of a mountain. And granted, there may be a few single-family residents that could be built in that area, but it doesn't strike me as realistic. So I don't know if anybody wants to speak to why the line was drawn there.
Great. Yeah, thanks.
And, well, go ahead.
Uh, Greg Lanning, the utilities director. And, uh, I don't know the total history of this particular line in terms of the blue line. Uh, but I, I think in the future, I can certainly show council and planning and zoning commission, you know, uh, probably a, a better defined line that absolutely follows topography. And your, your point's well taken. Um, for instance, you would take, uh, we have a storage tank up there by the, in, in the woodland area. And then we have a storage tank up off a pine. And both those are relatively the same elevations. That then becomes your base elevation that you follow the line around. And I think it's, uh, twenty-two twenty or something like that, uh, two thousand two hundred and twenty feet in elevation. And I would think, um, and several things, and your consultant probably can answer this too, drive or could drive necessarily the ACI. Uh, but we're heading into some negotiations with the county to better define our ACI. Uh, you may recall our, our current ACI is, is, is much farther out to the west and probably much more unserviceable in, in terms of utilities in particular. So in that case, the contour would be, uh, determined by, uh, the economics of pumping water to those areas, for instance, in this case. There'd be other factors like transportation and, uh, wetlands, et cetera, that may drive that. Uh, but we have a, probably a better, well-defined, uh, line following topography than what you're seeing here. It's relatively close. And for this purpose, I think it, it's fine for the discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Appreciate that. Please continue, guys. Thanks.
Okay, sure. So this is switching from multifamily to single-family capacity. Same color scheme, the blue, which there's not a lot of, is stuff that's laid in the pipeline. Uh, but single-family, uh, you know, single-family land. The red is vacant. Uh, so it's early pipeline or just vacant. And then the orange is, is underutilized. Uh, and this, I put stripes on it, but this is vacant ACI land. So, uh, that's, you know, a good point that you would, if anything got built there, it would be very low, uh, extremely low density just due to, uh, topography. So th- this is probably more uh, reliable indicator of, of vacant capacity in the, in the ACI.
Ted, can you distinguish between vacant and underutilized?
Vacant is literally, uh, land that, uh, is, that does not appear to have, uh, anything on it, or, or if anything, it's like an outbuilding or two. It's, it's not, there's no residence on it or, or no, uh, commercial use going on. Whereas underutilized has, there's some improvements on the land, you know, which just naturally would make it less, somewhat less likely, uh, to redevelop. So it's, it's a lower tier of development readiness, but, you know, uh, sometimes those things do redevelop. And it's just, it's difficult to anticipate uh, with underutilized properties, whether they're gonna, uh, end up redeveloping or not. Has a lot to do with land prices, has to do with ownership.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yeah.
How much acreage is in that?
There, I, I, I tallied up later, so we'll, we'll get to that in a, in a table and a few slides here. This is just, uh, industrial, s- same thing for industrial capacity. Uh, there's not much in the way of blue late pack pipeline stuff. There's some vacant land, including that lighthouse property that's indicated there. Um, some really smaller, more fragmented, uh, so vacant sites in the airport vicinity. There's a, a, a big area down. It's really bisected by rail, but that the pole yard uh, area in central Sandpoint, we've identified as underutilized. And it is a redevelopment, um, uh, potential opportunity. It would require some, probably some brownfield. You know, some, some special assembly and, and cleanup stuff, but it's, it's a potential redevelopment area. Now, it may not redevelop as industrial is, is one possibility. And when we get to office slash commercial, there's, uh, very scattered, very small spots, almost entirely limited to South Sandpoint. And even the, this acreage that you see here is probably overstated just because there's flexibility in the office or in commercial zoning that, that, uh, makes it fairly easy to do residential within those. So some of that land could conceivably just be taken, uh, by residential. So there's, uh, uh, very low capacity in, in commercial zone capacity. And, okay, sure. So these bar graphs, the one on left is, uh, when we were doing our demand estimates, you know, we had the high and low for each. So this is showing if we used all the low demand numbers on the left, if we use the high demand numbers on the right, the bars are for each land use. How many years of capacity do we have, does Sandpoint have in terms of land by development tier? So if we just look at blue, this is step, uh, how many years of capacity are in the late pipeline stage, very little. Uh, how much is in vacant or, uh, conceptual pipeline, you know, pre-approval pipeline? Uh, underutilized in the yellow, the, the scales of the two are different, just so I could fit them on the, the slide. But the, the capacity in years, this height is a hundred years in this slide. And it, it would be, uh, wherever up, up here in this slice. So just sort of keep that in mind. But you'll see that, that most of the low-density residential capacity is in that ACI area, which is the lowest development. It would take a lot of doing to, to make that land developable. You'd have to, uh, extend all the trump infrastructure annexes, et cetera, to make it happen. And that's where most of your years of capacity. Without that land, you've got less than twenty years of capacity under the low-demand scenario. Under high demand, you've just got barely over ten years of capacity left for, uh, both medium, uh, both high and low-density residential, similar amount of office space, less than ten years. And, and half that is, is that underutilized, you know, sort of pole yard area. This, the industrial flex, even though it shows you've got more than fifty years of capacity because of the issues we were talking about earlier, that, that, that may well not be a, a lot of capacity because you need to, to have some, for one thing, a lot of it is fragmented and may not be as useful, uh, to, to have a meaningful assembly for an employer. And because you need to have a palette of, of options available to, uh, potentially attract, uh, a large employer, you know, you, you need to overzone to the tune of probably double. So that, the, these are the actual acreage numbers. It's, there's a lot of numbers on the page. But the, so the very top two rows are, uh, stated in terms of acres. What's the estimated low and high annual demand for, uh, higher-density residential on the left, low-density residential detached office space and flex industrial space. That, that's how many, uh, net acres uh, per year of demand, we think, is out there. And then the next four groupings are, uh, going by the, the different, uh, development readiness, how many acres we have. So, uh, there is, uh, there's about ten point three blue, you know, the late pipeline acres of high-density residential land out there. That would give you between two and three years of capacity roughly. Within vac, vacant land, what was read on the maps, you've got another nine to fourteen years of capacity. Uh, but it's fifty-four acres to answer the acreage question. Eight, eight acres of underutilized, a lot of numbers here. It, it's mainly, uh, we can come back to this i- if, if we have questions on the specific acreages. But just know that it's, here's a slide and it's, it's near the end of the, uh, of the written reports, if you want to see the same table.
And so this, uh, map just shows kind of some special, we call it special focus areas, some areas that we are paying close attention to and that come out in our recommendations because they're areas of significant opportunity. So that, you know, the pole yard site that, um, Ted was just talking about, you know, significant redevelopment potential over, over time. But with certainly some challenges to making that happen. It doesn't just happen on its own. The, um, Baldi site, uh, was, you know, brought up several times as a potential, um, development site. It's not, um, necessarily going to be needed by the city anymore. Chances, of course, it's on the other side of the tracks and, and doesn't have utilities to it. And, and crossing the tracks, we're, you know, we're aware of how big a challenge that is. Um, what we're calling the lawyer slew properties down here by the, um, uh, by the lake in Dover is a, um,
No man's.
No man's land. So it's, it's largely vacant. It's not in either city or in the ACI. But it does, um, have some potential and would need some interjurisdictional discussions to figure out what to do with that. And then, um, you know, thinking about urban infill, we have the city parking lot downtown. That's a potential redevelopment site. Obviously, the parking, um, is critical to the vitality of downtown. And you, and you have a recent parking study that evaluates that. So, um, that's a potential to, you know, add some housing in an infill site through a public-private partnership. And we know there's interest in that. And I think your market is kind of maturing enough to where you're probably going to start seeing more um, interest in, in those kinds of urban infill, uh, projects. So, um, some kind of big takeaways that we have for, kind of food for thought before we jump into our, our core recommendations. So at a policy level for the housing and employment, um, you know, first thing is, and it was, it was great to hear that there's other jurisdictions in the audience tonight, is that housing is a regional issue. Sandpoint does not operate just as a market to its city boundaries, but it functions at a, what we think is at a county level for sure. And that includes all of your adjacent jurisdictions as well as the county. Um, and so the solutions to housing likewise should be regional in nature. Sandpoint isn't going to single-handedly solve, um, the housing crisis on its own. Um, and neither are its neighbors. Um, and they both fill potentially different niches within a regional housing market. And I think, kind of taking that a little bit further, it's also unrealistic to necessarily expect, um, all housing types to be able to be satisfied in any particular jurisdiction. So again, that kind of regional spread, um, geographically and by product type is, needs to be a part of the discussion. Affordable housing in particular, uh, to the lowest income tiers, that does not happen on its own. The market is, is not able to provide that. And so that requires subsidy. You know, typically public subsidy through tax credits and other programs. But, you know, in some, in some communities, in particular resort communities, employers are getting involved, just out of their own self-interest in ensuring that they have a workforce. And so there are strategies that can be employed to, to facilitate that. And, uh, but that, you know, there, there's a heavier lift to fulfilling that lower end of the housing market. As I mentioned earlier, industrial employment, user needs are more, are less flexible than they are for residential development. You know, because of the site considerations and, um, transportation access, um, having a, you know, kind of minimum thresholds of site size, um, and so on. And that's going to be critical to maintaining your competitiveness, to continue to attract, uh, new employers, but also allow your existing ones to expand. And then, of course, communication is, uh, critical. And that's what a comprehensive planning process is about. And it's communicating with your, with your citizenry. And that it's an educational process. And we're hoping that this information can be very useful for you in that, in that aspect. So, um, over the final few slides of our presentation, these are, these are kind of outlined at the tail end of the report that you got. Um, but really, um, the core recommendations. So obviously, starting with number one is continue to update the Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan. That's your guiding document that, from which all of your zoning and other policies are going to flow. That's where your housing and, and employment conversation needs to start. The second is review your land use codes. Um, so take a deeper dive. That's, that's beyond our, our current scope. But look for where changes and tweaks can be made to better achieve community goals. Look at allowed uses, maybe look at development standards. Parking is often one that a lot of communities look at. Things that could, um, further remove barriers to development and, um, open up and expand the feasibility of, uh, your desired development types. Refine, complete the refinement of the, um, Sandpoint's ACI, um, and revise your area city impact with Bonner County. That ACI area is obviously critical. That's, as Ted mentioned, that's where the, the vast majority of your future housing supply could potentially be met. So that flows to the, to the second bullet here, which is initiate a specific area plan, um, to guide that. So, um, what we often see and what's, what's really essential to the success of that kind of an expansion. If you look at that ACI, even the smaller ACI that we limited by, um, likely utility availability is, you know, it's a significant increase in the size of the city. And there are, um, you know, there's transportation implications, water and sewer implications, other utility implications. And to, and developers are going to be more likely to, you know, act upon that. And, and they need to be a part, participant in that process. If there is a solid plan that shows, you know, that kind of articulates the city's expectation for the pace of growth and how it's going to be funded, um, where it's going to start, what, you know, what, how it's going to be phased over time. And all of that needs to be done through kind of a comprehensive, um, specific area plan. And so that's a, that's a critical part, as opposed to just, you know, kind of ad hoc, um, you know, small utility extensions after another that may not, you know, lay the foundation for future, um, growth beyond it, addressing, you know, again, I mentioned, uh, phasing, so, uh, and funding is, you know, infrastructure funding, that needs to be a, a critical part of that. So you can, um, kind of front-load some of the critical infrastructure that needs to be upsized for growth. It may not happen for many years, but there's a financing mechanism in place to, um, make that happen and get paid back over time as development comes. Um, you know, more on utilities, uh, we're recommending that even Sandpoint review and consider updates to your, uh, utility service policies and, and agreements in that ACI. Um, and then likewise with your neighboring cities, um, really work with your neighbors and, um, and their, their utility services and, and the services you provide to, um, make sure that's handled comprehensively. And again, that, that's getting to the, kind of that regional look at your housing, housing need, that it's not something that each city should be tackling on their own. And that those utilities don't necessarily follow city boundaries. And so a real coordinated effort, um, is important. And then finally, um, uh, actually, there was one more slide after this, but create a multi-jurisdictional housing authority that through a joint powers agreement, that could really speak to, um, fulfilling that lower tier of, um, affordable housing. And, uh, you know, through, uh, tax credits and other, and other programs that, you know, the market is not going to provide that. And, um, and it's not, you know, fair or realistic that any specific city should provide that, that that's going to be best done through a multi-jurisdictional authority that can, um, tackle that at a regional level and bring in the expertise, um, that's specifically around, um, affordable housing finance, which is a whole world unto its, unto itself. Um, so again, um, intergovernmental agreements between Sandpoint and Ponderay and Cootney regarding water service. You know, we heard, we heard a lot about that. And we can talk about that more if you'd like, around, um, you know, the, the constraints on your water system and its impact on, um, development opportunity. And then finally, um, I mentioned that downtown parking lot site, and to, in anticipation of the results from that parking city, um, undertake a highest and best use analysis to guide your decisions on what that, what should happen on that block. Uh, most likely partnering with the renewal agency to pursue a public-private partnership. Particularly when there's public parking involved, we almost always see that done in a, in a public-private partnership. And, and urban renewal is a, you know, perfect tool, um, for facilitating that kind of a project. Um, that would, you know, continue to maintain the parking supply while also adding, um, potentially housing, hospitality. You know, what the study would help define what those, um, optimal uses would be for that key property. And that, thank you, everybody, is the last slide. So, um, I'm sure there's lots more questions and we're, and, uh, we have access to the full report. And Ted's got his laptop here with all the data tables if there's some specific questions. And, and, uh, we welcome, you know, whatever comments or questions you have for us, maybe turn off.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, should we stop screen sharing here and?
I may reshare once I find some of the data that I'm looking for.
Yeah, that's great. Uh, thank you for that presentation, John. One is really great. I have a question around the housing projections that you provided. So you were looking at, you know, price of housing, you were looking at population projections, you were looking at growth of key industries. But was there anything in your data that gave you insight into what specific type of housing product would be needed? So for instance, you know, one versus two versus three-bedroom rentals versus ownership? That's, i- is there anything that, that you, that you could aggregate in your data that would help get us towards that kind of understanding?
Well, one thing that we did look at when, uh, thinking about, uh, exactly that question is, i- is there a discernible trend in housing size out there? And I was not convinced that, uh, that there's a, you could make an argument for slight movement in, in either direction, but it, it's probably a, a better bet to assume that the average household size that's currently in Sandpoint is going to be, uh, the same going forward. As far as the rental versus ownership question, it's, you know, that, that's one that's hard to know exactly without some sort of a survey, a, a preference survey. Because you, it, it's hard to know based on market behavior what the preferences really are if there's only certain things available in the market. Um, but the, uh, the percent renter, uh, we did not assume, we, we assume that the overall percent renter would be about the same. But based on the migration dynamic that we're, we were seeing, where the, uh, more affluent households are migrating in and the, uh, lower-income households tend to be migrating out, that naturally affects our, um, our, our split between owner-renter capture. Because you're, you're going to have just, higher-income folks tend more to be on the ownership side than, uh, Because you're, you're going to have just higher-income folks tend more to be on the ownership side than on the rental side. So we indirectly assumed that the homeownership rates were going to be rising slightly over time because of that, those in, income shifts. I don't know how well that exactly answers the question, but, but we tried, we tried to, we, we tried to take into consideration the need across housing types in those capture estimates that we gave for Sandpoint.
Okay, well, let me ask this one maybe. So I, I recall that the median household size in Bonner County is maybe 2.3, does that sound about right? And, and I'm wondering if, if you notice in your trending, if that number is changing significantly?
It's not, and I've, there. I can't remember if this chart made it into the report or not, but I, I will find that the chart that shows that it's really not fluctuating very much around that 2.3 number, I, I will look for it as we, as we talk.
Okay, are there any other questions from the commission or the council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I know in the presentation, one of the segments that actually showed decline was retail. And I'm curious, in a, in a community of this size, have you seen, I mean, at some point in larger cities or even moderate, loss of retail, eventually loss of identity of that community? Do you see in, in this sized community, is that a fear if we lose too much retail space in the downtown core?
I think that's great.
Stores will persist, garden stores will persist. Sorry, sorry, he's a owner of a local garden shop.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's a great question. I think the, obviously, the impacts of e-commerce are driving some of that. You know, but there, there will be, you know, enough, there's significant, with population growth and adding rooftops, that does create demand that, you know, will offset to some extent the, the loss of retail from e-commerce. But I think your point about, you know, vitality and character is really important, that, you know, the retail, particularly in a downtown is, you know, that is the public square of a lot of cities. That's how neighbors meet, that's how people, you know, that's the way you experience your city and what makes it unique. So I do agree, it's, it's critical, and I think the, you know, the housing affordability aspect of it is, you know, we can't understate that, that it's, you know, part of the, it's not just about the e-commerce, some of the retail may be going away because employers can't staff their stores and because they can't find workers that can afford to live within, you know, a decent commute for the wages that retail can only afford to pay their workers. So there's, you know, there's a, there's a push-pull and, and, you know, I don't have the answers for it, but I, I do agree that, you know, retail is more than, this is just more philosophy, but retail is more than just, you know, unemployment niche or a commercial niche within an economy. It's, it's really part of, it has a social role within the city, it has a, you know, a marketing role within the community is part of what makes you attractive as a destination for, not just for the tourists and second homeowners, but also for your employers that create that kind of awesome town that you'd want to set up shopping and live in. So it's, it's really, it has an outsized impact for, you know, given the, the square footage and the, and the, you know, economics of it, so.
And, and the identity question, I, I mean, that's exactly the right way to, to frame it, I think. And it, it ties in really closely to the, the industry mix. If you're, you know, right now, as we said, you have this impressive, you, you don't look like the typical tourist town where all your employment is in leisure and hospitality and recreation. It's, you've got real sectors of, of manufacturing and professional services and, and, and healthcare. And if, if that slips, it, that trickles down to the, the retail. Because if it, if it gets supplanted, if that sort of real-town mix gets replaced by a, a town that is characterized by second homeowners, for the most part, affluent second homeowners, that will change the retail mix, that'll drive up land prices, making it harder for sort of normal retailers to exist downtown. We were hired by the city of Boulder a couple of years ago because they were, that was happening in, in Boulder, basically, that real retail hardware stores, drugstores, whatever, were being priced out of Pearl Street and their downtown areas and out of town entirely just because of, of housing prices. And they were sort of desperate to get it back. And I think one way to avoid that situation is to, to make sure you maintain a, some level of real jobs available to the people that live in Sandpoint.
Any other questions?
On the, the breakdown of the age groups, are you able to provide those age groups, like what they're renting versus owning? Interesting to see that mix, the older age group is, is owning and the younger age group renting or vice versa?
We do, did we show that slide? I thought we, we have a median age, oh, you, you're not talking just the median age, you're talking within each age group, the percent renter versus owner. That, that's really, unless you're a good-sized county, you just can't get census data that's sliced that it, that thinly, it would be great to have. But I can tell you that Sandpoint is too small to have that kind of data without great big margins of error.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
And then from the mix of residential, commercial, industrial, what, where are we versus what's ideal target? And I guess my question is, is do we need additional industrial lands? Or could that industrial land be converted to residential? Trying to understand what's, what's the right mix to have a good, thriving, balanced community?
It's a tough one, I, I mean, I think where we ended up after a lot of discussion was the, the need your reaction is anything you can turn into residential, you need to do it because you desperately need to add housing supply. But because of this identity question of, and being a, you know, turning into a completely tourist, second-home town versus having jobs, you know, normal, quote-unquote, normal jobs available.
I, I mean, I, I would answer that, so, I mean, like Ted's right, we, we had a lot of debate on this or discussion. There is no single right answer, it really is a policy question for a community to decide. But our, our take on Sandpoint is, and we, and I think we mentioned this a couple of points, is that the industrial employment, so you do have this authentic, real economy that's significant that can't relocate as easily or can't go just anywhere. The housing can almost go just anywhere with the right amount of infrastructure and planning, you know, leading up to it. But, you know, industrial would not ever likely go out into the ACI, for example.
Right, it's harder to get more industrial land, once you let it go to.
And, and so for those reasons, like it, it, they're not necessarily equal. And, you know, what the right balance is, is really, that is going to be contextual to each community. But the, you know, the interchangeability or the replaceability of it is, that does differ. And I think in a place like Sandpoint where you do have significantly more topography, you've got some significant infrastructure challenges, but also transportation, you know, access and barriers. The railroads are, you know, significant in terms of not just to serve industrial, but also the way they create barriers to expansion, the, plus the mountains and the lake and everything else. You know, it's not like, you know, Arizona or Texas or something where you can just, you can put industrial almost anywhere and it works because there's always a freeway nearby and it's all flat land and it's ubiquitous. So for that reason, I think, you know, we landed on the, the side of the industrial land that you have is pretty important to maintaining that industrial employment base that you have and allowing it to expand with your population so that, so that you can maintain that, you know, authentic, complete economy that you, that you currently have, which is, which I think is really unique and notable. But ultimately, it's a, you know, it's a conversation that's hap, that happens at the, through a comprehensive planning process and a, and a policymakers' process, and, and this is information that will hopefully guide that.
Ben, that's a great question, and, you know, I also want to underscore what you said, Chris, earlier, and that is, and, and you really just said it again, is that, you know, residential, you can kind of accommodate anywhere. And, you know, we've got a vast ACI, relatively vast ACI, that would be great for accommodating future housing, but not great at accommodating anything else. And then also, when we look at our commercial areas and even industrial areas in town, those can also accommodate residential even in addition to often, the, you know, we encourage residential growth above and behind commercial and our commercial districts. And so there's, there's always the opportunity for blending residential in with our commercial zones, but it doesn't work the other way around.
Yeah, and I would expect you're going to start as the, you know, as land prices continue to go up and the, especially, you know, right around downtown, you're going to continue to see proposals where you, you will have that vertical or mixed use happening or, or, you know, commercial in front and residential in the back. I think there's a lot more potential for that. A lot of that potential is driven by parking and structured parking, which is a whole other conversation. But again, as land prices go up and they're, and they, even as you build more housing, you know, it's unlikely that those prices are going to come down as, as housing, as land prices go up. What it does do is it makes it more feasible to build structured parking as a part of a mixed-use project. And that will enable, you know, that could open up some possibilities for interesting mixed use in those close-in commercial areas.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
You referenced in your report that there was about a 30% vacancy rate. I'm just curious what the trend has been, if that's normal compared to other resort cities, or if that trend has been going up in the last 10 years? Do you see it continuing, continuing to rise or plateau? Or just curious what your observations are?
We saw, i- if you go back decades, you see it sort of bounce between 25 and 30% kind of based on the economy to, to some extent, that it's a, I think during the recession, it went down to 25% just because some of that housing just got taken up by people needing housing as opposed to keeping it as vacation rentals. But it, but it doesn't fluctuate much, it's in that 25 to 30 range. And it's frankly, it's with other tourist places, I, I think it's all over the board, it's probably not, at Sandpoint's not wildly high or low there. I found that household size, just to interject, so between 2010 and 2021, the US household size is dead even 2.58, 2.58. Bonner County was 2.37, and then 11 years later, it was 2.35. So just a little change, Sandpoint 2.2 to 2.23. You've got kind of offsetting things, the boomers, as the boomer bulge ages, they require smaller, they, they have smaller households, but as the millennials are aging, which is also a big group, they're growing in terms of household size, and those are kind of offsetting trends.
Mayor Lewis, thank you for joining us today. Do you have any questions that you would like to ask? And if you do, I welcome you to, no? Okay, thanks, thanks for being here. Commission, councilors, any other questions?
Yeah.
If I could just have that answer, that, to that question about the average, median distance for in commuters?
Yeah, I'll look for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm curious if the analysis addresses school size or if the age demographic of the population that could be migrating here, if the analysis would think that we have adequate supply now. So if you're in the baby boomer, the bottom end of the baby boomer range that are retiring out here, it's, what did it say, 59 to 64? So I would think that in an analysis like this, that if, and the population we're talking about, that it could affect schooling, education and required space for that. I don't, I just don't know if it's buried in the appendix of this analysis or if it was a factor.
There's a, there's a very recent study done by the school district that's out there that I don't think, i- it's more complex in some ways than ours because it's focused entirely on families with kids, to the exclusion of it. It doesn't really care about what's going on with the rest of the population. And it, it's showing growth in young families that it, that's, that are producing kids. And I think what we're showing is that, that, yeah, you have that growth, but you also have an aging boomer demographic that, some of which is contributing to.
Yeah, but from a, but, but from a, so from like a, but from a, like a need for additional schools or, or teachers, we didn't specifically extrapolate what that demand would look like coming out of it. That would be something the school district would, would, would want to be a part of. And, and I think if we, if you did a sub-area planning process in the ACI, the school district would absolutely want to be a stakeholder in that because I would expect there to be school sites as a part of that growth area. But yeah, buried in our data, there's not a, there's not a number that says, you know, this, this kind of growth in these demographics translates into X numbers of students added to the school district.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of interest too, I, I've done generational studies. Boomers are 80 million strong, I'm at the end of the boomers. Generation X is like 40, about, yeah, about 40 million, and then millennials are about 80 million. We're 70 and they're 80, so they're a bigger generation than the boomers are. So I think that's why we see a lot with the, with my generation and with the millennials coming. It's kind of a competition thing, but just though, just to add some numbers to it, so you can, and G, Gen Z, I have no idea. All my grandchildren are Gen Zs, a lot of them, I think, but.
The presumption maybe is that the millennials will be back when their income is high enough.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for staff, probably Greg, the boyer slew, what's the availability of the utilities?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the, the question is, the boyer slew and availability utilities. I think, you know, currently, there's none in the area, and then our master plan effort identified on the sewer side constraints when we get up in the, the gravity sewer part of that. So when we get closer in town to the plant, we have restrictions to capacity in the gravity sewer. The slew itself would require pumping, you know, it's lower, and so it would require, but not a difficult task, you know, per se, in terms of engineering, you can almost get sewer and water anywhere that you need to, it's just a matter of cost. It's just a matter of cost. There's a more specific question, so it'll be, you know, growth related and how we expand. You know, the current master plan has identified those areas, but in terms of programming those into the 20 year capital plan. They're pretty far out in terms of. You know, of course, those could be reprioritized if that's where we decide we want to serve.
Thanks, Greg.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Greg, since you're still up here, if you don't mind, and maybe you could answer this, since we were talking about the boyer slew. Could you add any color to the McFarland-Jolson pole yard? And I don't know what a Brown, Brownfield funding is.
Very good, the, that site. You know, once used for all those years for that purpose, you know, has contamination. It still does, it persists and we monitor for that. And by contamination, it includes, you know, surface area contamination as well as groundwater and monitoring wells. And so a, a Brownfield designation is a, is a federal program then. That makes funding available for the redevelopment of that area, but not necessarily bringing all of the contamination out. Only bringing it to certain standards. And if you identify or do not identify groundwater, for instance, as drinking water in that area, that really helps. So the Brownfield then will look at capping that and, and continuing to remediate it over time. So by capping, it could be, you know, asphalt, for instance, in certain areas if necessary. And or, you know, grass and turf grass type of uses as well, just depending on the types of uses needed or wanted at that point. So Brownfield provides federal funding for the help of that redevelopment and putting it back in. And then it also continues with remediation over time.
I would add, so, you know, brownfields typically aren't suitable for residential use. And, you know, even for industrial use, presumably it would take a pretty significant level of remediation and cost. So, but that, you know, definitely would be a more appropriate use than, you know, multifamily residential, for instance.
Well, and Mayor, obviously better than said and vacant, you know, waiting for a total cleanup as well. I've been part of a couple of very successful Brownfields redevelopments and. Including a golf course, by the way, that was developed to recirculate and treat water, you know, as an example. So good enough or okay for walking on and playing golf, but not good enough and okay for swimming in it, for instance, and having that type of contact. And you're absolutely right, there'll be certain designated uses and generally not residential, that's correct.
Thanks, Greg. Okay, and Ted, were you able to come up with an answer to that?
So between 2009 and 2019, the average commute time. Unfortunately, I, I've only got it at the county level. The average commute or median commute went from 23 and a half minutes to 25 and a half minutes. So it went, went up by a couple of minutes. Over that period, I, I can, I can follow up with you afterwards on, I, I know a source for Sandpoint, but it takes a little bit of doing. I, I thought I had it at the ready, but I don't.
Yeah, that'd be great if you could just follow up with an email and were there any other questions that we didn't quite? Or maybe I should put this to you guys, were there any other questions that were posed that weren't able to be answered tonight? That you think you could come back with a, with a response from, you know, we asked about the renting versus owning age distribution. It sounded like that one was maybe a little bit out of reach, given the small community and data sets that we have here. You know, I was asking about home, home size projections, but it seems like maybe that's, that one is a little bit out of reach as well. I'm asking everyone to help me recall here, was there anything else that we didn't get answered that we could request a follow up? Okay. Okay, any other questions for Cleveland? Gentlemen, I want to thank you again for your time this evening and for your work on this report. This is very helpful for our planning purposes going forward and. Everyone, I thank you for your attendance this evening and with that, our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, everybody.